This is our June the 2nd Planning Commission Meeting. Mr. Peterson, would you call the roll, please?
Sir, Commissioner Drain.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks. Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. Chair Warren.
Sir, thank you very much. You have the minutes of our May the 19th meeting in your packet. Are there any questions? If not, we'll call for a motion.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Gay.
Drain.
Chair Warren.
Yes, sir. We now enter into our public hearing for tonight's meeting. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I request that you order that the record for all, for tonight's hearings include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, also the commission's entire file for each application and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, please administer the oath to each of those witnesses.
Word, tell the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. In your packets, you had the subdivision site development plans. Are there any questions? Hearing none, they will be approved as submitted. We have no old business tonight, is that correct? So we enter into our first public hearing. 2022 38Z County Motley Trading Company, or I guess Company LLC, care of Bradley Debris and Justin Gerald's, have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 1.54 acres located southwest corner of the intersection at Collet Road and Vining Lane from RE Residential State to RS1D, single-family residential with a general development plan. Ms. Hurd.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting in September of last year for the property you just described, located at the corner of Vining Lane and Collet Road. The current zoning is RE and the property was rezoned to this classification in 2003. The current use is vacant with a future land use designation of low-density residential. Going to jump on to page two of the staff report and look at the proposed layout for the proposed lots. You'll see there are six lots that are proposed, two would front only on Collet Road, with four lots also having frontage on Vining Lane. There's also a proposed building setback of 65 feet for the two lots here, proposed lots one and two. Touching on the natural features, if I jump back to the aerial view, you'll see there are some mature trees along the southern property line, and the applicants have agreed to preserve these in their development plan conditions. Looking at the surrounding density, we'll look at the zoning map here and just note that the proposed density for the development is 3.89 dwelling units per acre, which is similar to the existing densities for the adjacent sewer development. Those would be the more green shaded areas. Those are more recent developments since sewerheads became available in the area. And we have noted that the density for the Vining subdivision is 3.81 dwelling units per acre, and that would be the subdivision to the east here. And then the density for the most proximate lots, zoned RS1D on the left here, is 3.57 dwelling units per acre. We'll touch on the surrounding architectural features and building materials. The applicants have imposed similar requirements for home sizes, garage requirements, materials for homes, building foundations and driveways in their development plan conditions for homes in the nearby area. Then looking at building orientation, the applicants agreed that homes on proposed lots one and two would face Collet Road, and homes on the other lots would face Vining Lane. Looking at the proposed open space, there is no additional open space proposed, although the applicants did agree to complete the existing sidewalk that's located on Vining Lane. There's currently a gap where that vacant section is there. The property is located in the Plano Focal Point Plan, and we evaluated five of the recommendations from that focal point plan. There are a few for your consideration this evening. The first, looking at the future land use map, which I mentioned earlier is low-density. And while the proposed RS1D zone is not listed as a potentially compatible zone for this future land use designation, the proposed density does fall within the allowable range in this category. Jumping down to PL8, this particular policy encourages high-quality design, and so the applicants have set in place some standards for materials in their development plan conditions that require brick, stone, masonry, or cementitious material, or vinyl on all sides. The applicants further agree to limit the amount of vinyl for homes fronting Vining Lane to no more than 85 percent. All homes shall have brick or stone foundations. And then on the next page, PL9, from the focal point plan, states that vinyl may be permitted on a limited basis, and that no more than 30 percent of homes within subdivisions encompassing 10 lots or more should have a front facade constructed of 100 percent vinyl. And although the proposed development contains less than 10 lots, four of the proposed lots will function as part of the Vining subdivision, and so the applicants agreed in their development plan conditions to limit vinyl on these lots to no more than 85 percent. Jumping down to the development plan conditions, number one is a housekeeping item, number two limits the development to a maximum of six lots, three requires that utilities be placed underground, four addresses building materials for homes on the proposed lots, five and six address minimum home size, seven imposes a requirement for a two-car attached garage on all lots, eight requires brick or stone foundations for homes, nine prohibits modular homes, 10 outlines driveway materials, 11 deals with accessory structures, 12 imposes that requirement to extend the sidewalk on Vining Lane that I mentioned earlier, 13 deals with access, 14 and 15 address building orientation, 16 addresses the increased front building setback of 65 feet for proposed lots one and two along Collet Road, 17 addresses preservation of the existing tree line, and 18 essentially converts development plan conditions four and 11 to plat restrictions at the time a plat would be recorded in the future. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, we evaluated 15 of the applicable items from the comprehensive plan. We found that six of those items are in compliance, and there are nine items for the commission to consider this evening, the first being LU111 and 112, which deal with the future land use map. LU1.1.3 looks at compatibility. LU2 and 2.1 look at quality of development and the character and pattern of development. LU2.1.1 looks at open space. Jumping down to LU28, which deals with the Plano Focal Point Plan. And then on the last page, HN2.1 and HN4, which look at suitability of the proposed housing type and housing options for the area. With that, I'll wrap up on page one with the points to consider. The first is that the application complies with the majority of the criteria that the staff assessed in the review process. Second, the proposed density is similar to the existing densities for the adjacent sewer developments. And then last, the applicants have proposed to incorporate similar home sizes, building materials, foundation materials, and building setbacks as what currently exists for adjacent sewer lots that have been recently developed. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurd. Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Hurd?
Two, Rachel. The first is, I see all the lots numbered, and then there's like a rectangular area that isn't numbered, and there seems to be nothing allocated to that space, and it's in the lower right-hand corner of the map. Can you enlighten me there?
You talking about over here, or?
Yes, well.
That's the adjacent property.
That is adjacent property.
Yep.
All right, very good, thank you. And then, I'm curious, you said you had a preliminary conference in September of last year? How long, why so long before it got to this point?
I'm not entirely sure. I know just some of the survey work has kind of been behind, everybody's super busy, so that might be one reason, or maybe they were just really thinking things through before turning in their application, I'm not sure. You may ask them.
No way, no way. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Hurd? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here and would like to make some comments? Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please.
My name is Lauren Gerald. My address is 9154 Poplar Grove Lane, Alvin, Kentucky.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So we are essentially wanting to finish out the Vining subdivision, and my client, the adjacent lots that Commissioner Graham had pointed out, he actually built the two beside that, so we're trying to make it as cohesive on that empty corner as possible to finish out that empty section in the Vining subdivision, and then also those remaining two on Collet Road. The classification we want is similar to those adjacent lots, so we are just trying to make, finish out that empty section as best as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Warren, hold on a minute. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
So I think Rachel alluded to this, the binding elements or the DPCs in this case are essentially the same as what's in the bindings subdivision?
Correct.
So.
We tried to mirror them as closely as possible, so that it was all cohesive throughout the subdivision. We don't want our four lots to stick out compared to the others.
Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Gerald's? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here tonight that is in opposition to this request? Yes, sir, if you would come to the microphone, please, sir.
My name is Gary Keys.
Just get up here to the microphone, I'm sorry. Your name, sir?
Gary Keys.
Yes, sir.
And I live directly across at 569 Vining Lane.
Swear to tell the truth?
Oh, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not in opposition to a man building on his property, but I'm in opposition to the RS-D1, which basically I do believe from my research allows them to build a house on a 5,000 square foot lot, if I'm not mistaken, according to everything I've seen. And the bindings, I believe, is a RS-1C, which is a 8,000 square foot lot. So when she says that they're going to keep it in line with the bindings, it's not going to be in line, because they have a 50-foot frontage on the four houses on Vining, and everybody else is a 60-foot frontage. So I'm in opposition to that. Another thing, what's to stop them from coming back with a different plot plan once they get 5,000 square foot lots and creating more houses and coming back for approval? I didn't see anything that said they could not do that. So I'm in opposition for that reason as well, that at any time they could come back and eight houses, maybe they could squeeze 10 in there. Another thing, it's my understanding that on the 1D, they can do townhomes and twin homes, according to the zoning, whereas the RS-1C, they can't. I believe they can do twin homes but not townhomes, or townhomes but not twin homes, one or the other. So I'm in opposition because of that. But like I said, I don't have a problem with them putting three houses, frontage, and keeping with bindings as a RS-1C. I guess that's probably about all I have to say.
Sir, maybe Ms. Hurd could answer those, your two questions?
I can try and address some of the concerns as far as the number of lots. I think you had stated a concern that they could come in later and try and squeeze in more lots.
Didn't say they could, I said what's to stop them from trying?
Sure, so their development plan conditions that they have supplied this evening limit the development to no more than six lots, and require that no more than two lots front on Collet Road. So they are, with their written restrictions, essentially tied into no more than six lots in this general configuration.
And in this, so the configuration could be changed?
It could change slightly. You're right that the minimum lot width is 50 feet, but if they decided that they wanted to increase the lot width for 50, you know, to 52, and shift things around slightly as far as that is concerned, they could potentially do that.
What's to stop them from just changing the whole thing?
So you'd mentioned, you'd mentioned twin homes and townhomes?
I'm saying that's what the zoning says.
Yes, and on.
Let her finish, answering your questions, and then you're free to ask another question.
Yes, sir.
And on the face of the zone and the way the ordinance is written, you're correct, but then there's also a clause in the ordinance that says if the development plan that's presented this evening during the public hearing does not specifically call out that they are planning to build twin homes or townhomes, that it would require another public hearing, and they would have to come back and amend the development plan as it's proposed currently. So they couldn't, if this moves forward this evening, they couldn't then, three months from now, decide that they want to build townhomes and change the plan completely.
They would not be able to amend it.
They would have to come back to another public hearing with another round of public notification that would require another hearing before this board.
Correct, and that's what I'm saying. There's nothing to stop that if it's approved as RS-1D now, that they can come back and try to change. But if it's approved as a RS-1C, it keeps the lots at 8,000 square feet, it keeps the frontage at 60 foot, and it keeps it more in line with the Vining subdivision itself, because there are no 50-foot frontage lots out there, there are no 5,000 square foot lots out there.
So if they had requested the RS-1C zone this evening, and that moved forward, there would still not be anything that would prevent them from coming back later and applying for a different zone?
I understand, but it still keeps the lot at 8,000 square foot, doesn't it?
Yes, if that's the zone they requested.
Okay, and now it's at 5,000. Yes.
So one clarification, Mr. Keys, I want to make sure I understand your objection. Ms. Hurd has alluded to the fact that, let's assume for a moment that they did apply for RS-1C this afternoon. There's nothing to prevent them from coming back later at a public hearing just like this and applying for an RS-1D, even though it's already been zoned RS-1C. And so in this case, if they change this to a larger number of lots, they will have to go through the same process that they would have to go through to get to an RS-1C or an RS-1D, still a public hearing, am I correct about that? Still posted, still notification sent. So the process is essentially the same. Now, so one of his other questions was, why did they choose C rather than D? What is in this that gets us to D?
Believe, and they probably need to address this, but the RS-1D zone allows the creation of six lots, whereas if you did C, I believe you would only get five.
Well, they're just under the minimum, or somewhere along the line there.
Yeah, because if you look at the lot frontage on Vining Lane, you'll see that the lot widths are proposed at 50 feet, so just given the frontage that's available, if they would have applied for the C designation, the lot widths would be wider, thus reducing the number of lots that they would be able to subdivide.
Let me make one, let me make sure I understand one last thing. Let's assume that they do make one or two lots at the minimum. Given that they are restricted to the number of lots, that means that they've got to also make some lots larger, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Mr. Keys, did we address most of your questions?
Well, yes, I guess. I don't see the point of, well.
I think the other thing to answer your question about them coming back and changing, anything that ever comes that we approve, anybody can always come back and change. And so, I mean, we never can stop that. But I think what you'll find, in all the years of doing it, maybe one time or two, some people come back and trying to really change the binding elements. And so I think in this case, this board would not, if we approve this, three months from now, if they come back and say, hey, we want to go from six to 10, it's not going to happen. Or we want to put a bunch of townhomes there.
Yeah.
Or we want to completely change it, or we want to change it to commercial. This same body is going to hear that, to hear that motion, or to hear that application, we know what we zoned the first time around, and so I can't tell you that it would never happen, and there would never be a circumstance where that could happen, but it would be a whole new hearing with a whole new set of facts at that point, no different than this hearing tonight.
Yes, sir, I understand. I guess that when she said keeping with the way bindings is right now, it's not. You know, you're putting four houses where there would normally be three houses.
I see.
And that's really it. You've got 50-foot lot frontages as opposed to 60-foot lot frontages.
So specifically, it may not have been clear what my question was. My question was, are the development plan conditions, or what we used to refer to as the binding elements, are they the same as what's in the bindings? What you're referring to is density, and density is slightly different than the bindings.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about going from 3.81 to 3.89. Yes, it's just marginally different, and I see why they're doing D instead of C, but they're not very far over C, and they have restricted the number of lots so that we don't object and say, okay, now you're doing D and you're going to have a significant increase in density. If we look at their density, it's actually just ever so slightly below. And so it looks like staff has done a good job in restricting that ability to actually go to anything that D allows. So they're saying, okay, we'll let you do D, but we're going to restrict the number of lots that you can develop, and we're going to restrict those, what was the other item? That was the number of lots?
Well, and I guess just to clarify, that wasn't the staff's decision as far as the number of lots that were proposed, this is just the application that was submitted to our office to bring before you this evening.
So the applicant is offering that?
The applicant is proposing the six lots, the RS-1D zone with the 50-foot lot widths, that's just what they brought to us to bring before you this evening. That's what they're presenting.
And so the applicant apparently has done that in order to address compatibility issues?
Well, they, I think they need to get up and address their own development plan conditions and how they feel that what they're presenting is compatible, and then you'll have to decide if you agree with that.
I guess my opinion is it's really not compatible, because you're squeezing in four where there is three. It's also the main entrance to the subdivision. So, and Ms. Hurd, I'm sorry I interrupted you. It wasn't my intent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keys.
Thank you.
I think we have a question on the floor, if the applicant could come in and address
So could you, could you tell us why you requested RS-1D rather than C, and then limited the number of lots available in RS-1D?
Yes, of course. Just like Ms. Hurd said, we limited it to, or we did RS-1D, so we could have the six lots, otherwise we would have had to have five lots. We're just trying to maximize the space that we can build on with, it's still being cohesive with the subdivision. And the lots adjacent on Collet are also RS-1D, so we were keeping with that theme because we also had those zoned as well.
So, and so what was the reason for limiting it to six lots?
We wanted to follow closely to the plan. The, another lot above lot six is .2 acres, they're not very far off in acreage, they're all similar. The only one I believe that's significantly similar is the one directly, the very first one on the left in Vining. It's about .4 acres, but all of them are generally .2 acres in that subdivision, and then on the other side, the same thing, the lot directly beside our proposed lot one is approximately .4 acres. So we're just trying to keep with the acreage of the adjacent lots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gerald's. Is there anybody else in the audience that has a question or a comment about this?
James Caldwell, Van Meter and Slavy, 1015 Shive Lane.
Word, tell the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify something that she had said. I actually didn't know until I just looked it up. So the lots to the right on Collet are actually only 50-foot wide, and they're .25 acres. And then, let me pull up the other one. She said that they were the same width and were actually a little bit bigger. And then the second thing to kind of think about, we could have done RS-1C. I am pretty sure, I tried to do the math in my head real quick before I walked up here, and I'm saying this, I think I'm correct, and I could do RS-1C, but it didn't, we didn't want to put more entrances on Collet to increase the traffic there. We'd rather put it on the street that didn't have as much traffic, and that was also in keeping with what Josh Moore was wanting, so.
So how would that entrance affect the number of lots?
Say that one more time.
How would that entrance affect, if you did the other entrance, the entrance itself takes away from the number of lots, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, if I was to do an RS-1C development, there would be three lots fronting Collet. And so I, with Josh Moore's guidance, we made those lots a little bit bigger, they're 80-foot wide, and so they're, I mean, 60's minimum on RS-1C, so they're 80, and then we shortened, we made them 50 fronting bindings, and that was just to minimize entrances. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
TJ's. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 202238Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker? Commissioner Drain? Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion passed, goes to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our next item tonight is 202239Z BG, Baron River Capital LLC, care of Cleveland Simpson, has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 8.0.82 acres located zero 12th Avenue, approximately 147 feet from High Street, from CB, Central Business, to RM3 Townhouse, multifamily residential with a general development plan.
We had a pre-application meeting on May the 2nd for the property that you mentioned, and that is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is Central Business, and the current land use is vacant. The proposed zoning is RM3. The proposed land use is multifamily residential, and the future land use is mixed-use residential. The applicants are proposing to rezone 0.82 acres from CB to RM3 in order to con-
in order to construct three multifamily residential, uh, buildings containing 14 units on the properties. Uh, the proposed density is around 17 dwelling units per acre. Um, flipping over to page two, uh, under the site design and compatibility, compatibility review, uh, surrounding density, uh, within one-tenth of a mile densities range from zero to 51.20, um, with the average density of 12.67 dwelling units per acre. Uh, the surrounding land uses, um, is mainly comprised of a mix of single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and public institutional uses. There's also other vacant tracts in the area. Uh, moving down to the, uh, development plan, uh, conditions, the applicant submitted the following development plan conditions. Number one, uh, the property will be developed with a maximum of 14 dwelling units. Um, the development will be under single ownership and single management. Number two, uh, the building, uh, the building closest and adjacent to East 12th Avenue will be oriented to face East 12th Avenue. Number three, the property will be developed as generally depicted on the concept plan, uh, in terms of location and parking. Uh, no more than six parking spaces will be located between East 12th Avenue and the front facade of the building closest to, uh, East 12th Avenue. Number four addresses the, uh, structure height, uh, will not exceed two stories. Number five, um, addresses, um, building materials there. Number six, uh, the property will be developed with at least, uh, 30% open space. Number seven, uh, the property will be developed with internal sidewalks, which will connect to the sidewalks along East 12th Avenue. Number eight, um, addresses the, uh, tree canopy there, uh, mature, mature and healthy trees, um, that, that have a measurement from six feet from the ground of at least 12 inches and exists within 10 feet of the northwest boundary line of the property will be maintained. Um, number nine, uh, the property shall have one access point on East 12th Avenue, which will be approved by the City of Bowling Green Public Works. Uh, the property will also be served, um, by the alleyway, uh, located at the rear of the property that will also be approved by the Bowling Green Public Works Department. Number 10, uh, the property will be developed with a uniform lighting and parking areas and travel ways. Uh, will be, uh, designed as shoebox style or wall pack lighting. Um, number 11, uh, all utilities will be located underground. And number 12, um, addresses sink, any sink holes there. Uh, moving down to the Focus 2030 category review, uh, staff evaluated 20 applicable goals and objectives and action items. So, uh, to look at a few of these, uh, this proposal may comply with LU2 and LU2.1. Uh, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored, tailored to preserve the character of the downtown area. Um, the proposal may comply with LU2, 2.5, LU2.5.2, and HN1.2. Uh, planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area and if it will protect and stabilize, uh, older residential uses located nearby. Um, let's see here. Uh, the proposal may comply with H, uh, HN1 and HN1.3. Uh, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible, is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve, uh, existing character and pattern of the development within the area, and if it will strengthen the nearby properties. The proposal may comply with HN2.1 and HN4. Uh, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location. Going back to the points to consider, uh, there are two. Uh, the applicants agreed to provide a minimum of 30% open space and develop the property within, uh, with internal sidewalks that connect with the sidewalks on East 12th Avenue. And, uh, applicants addressed tree preservation along the northwestern boundary line, uh, but did not agree to maintain trees along the southeast, uh, southeastern boundary line or any other portion of the development area. Uh, that is all we have for the staff report, but be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here and would like to, uh, make any comments, or the representative?
Tad Pardue, 1010 College Street, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Pardue.
Good evenings, pleasure to be back before the commission this evening. Uh, just by way of introduction, again, Tad Pardue, I represent the applicant Baron River Capital LLC. Baron River Capital LLC consists of two gentlemen, Houston Natcher and Cleveland Simpson, who are here this evening, and then we also have, uh, Jase Caldwell, Thaksin Spears from Van Meter and Slavy, to the extent there are any questions that need to be addressed by them. Uh, with the commissioners not having any questions of the staff, based on the staff presentation, I don't have anything else that I can add to that presentation, um, unless there are any specific questions of, of the commission uh, as it pertains to the application. If there are not, uh, or if there are, we'll be glad to address those, and I have the folks here this evening that should be able to address those.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Pardue or the applicant?
Ted, real quickly, I, I can't recall if this was addressed in the DPCs, but are you anticipating a uniform appearance for these, for these structures?
There will be.
There will be?
Yes. Sure, yeah, we, uh, my tech advisor will have to help me get those. Yeah, we do have some elevations that didn't make their way to your packet that...
Very helpful, good, sure.
As you see in the concept plan, there, the three principal structures, here we go.
So, you, you've adequately addressed my complaint number three and four, which is you didn't supply any elevations, so, good job. Uh, yeah, that gets us there.
As you see on the concept plan, you have the, the building to the far east, far west. Those will contain four two-bedroom units, and then the one in the middle, six one-bedroom units for a total of 14. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Uh, Commissioners, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Pardue?
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Natcher. Good luck. All right, uh, no other questions, we call, uh, excuse me, is there any opposition? Case? Don, any opposition? Okay. We, we call for a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan document number 202239Z BG based upon the testimony and document presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain? Chair Warren?
Sir, the motion is approved, and will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. We, do we have any other new business tonight, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no discussion items, then our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here tonight.